Recording in progress. 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 Recording in progress.
Oh, Barstow's here. Let's just go. I would like to welcome Milton Captain Charles Barstow to lead us in the invocation.
Before I start the inter. My apologies for being tardy, but I'd like to put a positive spin on that, too. Multiple people are obeying our approved speed limits. And that a lot of people are enjoying this great weather that we're having.
Yep, thank you.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we are so very thankful for the opportunities and blessings that you have provided this community. As we strive to provide stewardship and direction to Milton, we ask that you continue to guide this community and all who live in and serve it. We ask also that you allow us to extend grace to others as you have extended it to us, that we hear wisdom not only from you, but from the words and perspectives of others, and that you remind us daily of how to work together for the betterment of Milton. Please continue to watch over us and be present in our midst so that we can do your will in all that we undertake, both within our community and with those we serve. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Captain. I would like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, February 6, 2023, to order. The city strongly recommends. And if you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, then please bring your comment cards to the clerk as soon as possible. While the Milton rules allow speaker to turn in their comment card up until the clerk calls the agenda item, once the agenda item is called, no more comment cards can be accepted. Will the city clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will be happy to call roll for the February 6, 2023, regular city council meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment, you are required to submit a public comment card. Your comment card must be presented to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Any comment cards received after the item has been called will not be accepted. All speakers, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, an affidavit is required stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Please review tonight's agenda, and if you would like to make a comment, please bring your comment card to me now. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Andrea Verhoff.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Juliette Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cookley.
Here.
Councilmember Jan Jacobus.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is approval of the meeting agenda. I would like to request council make one change, and I would like to move new business agenda item number 23-040 up to immediately follow the consent agenda items. And I will open it for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the changes to the agenda as requested. Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Moore and a second from Councilmember Morick to approve the consented, to approve the meeting agenda as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, next is general public comment. Do we have any general public comment?
We do not have any general public comment.
Okay, so I'll wave public comment, and I'll ask the city clerk to please call the next item.
The next item is the consent agenda. The first item is approval of the January 18, 2023, regular city council meeting minutes, agenda item number 23-026. Item B is approval of construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Gracie Gray Contractors for the Hamby Road Bridge rail replacement, agenda item number 23-027. Item C is approval of an order agreement and addendum number one between the City of Milton and Just Voya, Inc., to provide upgraded functionality and redaction services for open record searches and document management, agenda item number 23-028. Item D is approval of a construction services agreement with Spectrum Fence Company, LLC, to provide permanent fencing along Legacy Park's detention pond, agenda item number 23-029. Item E is approval of a purchase agreement for 0.087 acres of right-of-way and 0.181 acres of permanent construction and maintenance easement at 1090 Meathfield Road from Sandra Louise Perry and Sheila Lynn Spruell as co-trustees of the Robert M. Spruell Family Trust and Jacqueline D. Spruell, agenda item number 23-030. Item F, approval of a conchange order number two between the City of Milton and Purvis Systems, Inc., to amend the existing goods and services purchase contract by increasing the maximum contract price for the installation of a fire station alerting system at Milton Fire Station 42, agenda item number 23-031. Item G is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Pond and Company, Inc., for design services on Cox Road improvements, agenda item number Item H, approval of a construction services agreement with Kulmer Home Services, Inc., doing business as Certapro Painters of Alpharetta and Kennesaw, to provide sanding and repainting of the scorestands at Bell Memorial Park, agenda item number 23-033. Item I, approval of a professional services agreement with the Practical Design Partners, LLC, for preliminary design services at the intersection of State Route 140, Arnold Mill Road, at Green Road, agenda item number 23-034. Item J, approval of change order number two between the City of Milton and American Facility Services, Inc., to provide cleaning services for the restroom at Providence Park, agenda item number 23-035. Item K, approval of construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Triscares, Inc., for the landscape improvement project along the Hopewell Road frontage of the Thomas Byrd Senior House, agenda item number 23-036. Item L, approval for the city attorney to submit an amicus brief in support for Gwinnett County's petition for the certiorari to the Georgia Supreme Court in the case Gwinnett County versus Schroder, agenda item number 23-037. The final consent agenda item is M, approval of subdivision plats and revisions. It's the property of Natalia Montz at 13475 Bethany Road, Landlots 959 and 960, District 2, Section 2. It's a minor plat to subdivide the parcel into two tracts. Track one will contain 4.82 acres, and track two will contain 1.0 acre for 5.82 acres total, with a density of 0.34 lots per acre, agenda item number 23-038. Mayor?
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Cookerly and a second from Councilmember Jacobus to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. We'll move on to the move new business item. Will the city clerk please say on that item?
Mayor, that item is consideration of a resolution appointing members to the City of Milton Board of Milton Sustainability Advisory Committee for a board member for at-large, agenda item number 23-040. Mayor?
Thank you, council, tonight. I would like to appoint Charlie Lancelot to the Milton Sustainability Committee. If anyone knows Charlie, he is what I would call the keeper of Providence Park, very active, involved in Providence Park from the very, very beginning. Moved to the area in 1995, and he will be a great asset to the board. So with that, I will ask that council approves him. I will open it for motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve your board member at-large.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Morick and a second from Councilmember Johnson to approve Charlie Lancelot to the City of Milton's Board of Milton Sustainability and Advisory Committee for the at-large position. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Charlie, come on up, and I'll swear you in.
I do. I do solemnly swear. I will faithfully perform what you do. Sustainability advisory. Sustainability advisory. I would support and defend the Charter thereof.
Yeah. Part of thereof.
Well, it's the Constitution. Falls in the state of Georgia.
Yeah.
Take a picture. What do you want? River tree.
Well, if people want to stand up there, that's fine, too. I mean that. And why don't you come around? Sure.
Okay.
That's fine.
Going down. Yep.
Here, why don't you scoot over? There you go, perfect. That's easy.
Having to stumble over. Yep, don't worry about that. That was quick.
Mark, that whole time, we got it locked up. For sure, we did.
Okay, are we ready? Real quick. Three, two, one, smile. There you go. Good job. Great.
Thanks, Charlie. Congratulations to you. But you're.
Okay, we'll move on to reports and presentations. Will the city clerk please say on the first item?
First item is recognition of appreciation to Brenda Hamstead, Lee Collins, and Marty Locke for their board member services. Mayor?
Uh, thank you. I will turn this over to Councilmember Moore.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So it is my distinct pleasure to honor three terrific Milton citizens who have served on boards and committees for us for a variety of positions and for several years. I'm actually going to go in reverse order and save the best for last, and see where I'm going in a minute. So I'd like to first honor Marty Locke, who is not able to be here tonight. He's traveling out of the state and probably he should have been here. I think he's traveling with fraternity brothers to ski out west. Might have been safer to be here, but we wish him well on his ski adventures. Marty has been a member of the community for, I think, 18-plus years and a member of, or a citizen of Alpharetta prior to moving to Milton. During his tenure in Alpharetta, he actually also served on the Planning Commission as an honored member and distinguished member of their Planning Commission. I met Marty about 18-plus years ago, just prior to becoming a, or 17 years ago, prior to becoming a city. We actually ran against each other in the campaign for our first seated city council members, and both of us lost. But we realized that we shared a significant amount of our platform ideas that were the same, so we became fast friends. And over the course of time, Marty was sage counsel to me when I had the pleasure of serving the mayor on the Planning Commission and oftentimes had some great ideas to share. So it was a natural transition when I had the good fortune of being seated on council to look to Marty to serve as a member of the Planning Commission. Marty served us for two years and in a very distinguished way, making contributions to a variety of significant improvements to the city, not least of which was the tree ordinance, as well as contributing to the 2040 comprehensive plan and many, many more contributions as well. It was only his move to Cherokee County that took him out of our jurisdiction that caused his resignation, but we wish him, wish him well and thank him for his service, and I will share the plaque with Marty when I see him next. Next, I'd like to honor Lee Collins, who served on the design review board. If you've ever met Lee, you know quickly, he's a man with a great eye for quality building and quality work in the City of Milton and with his very successful real estate business, brought a great eye to what was good and what maybe wasn't good, what was in the Milton look and feel and maybe what wasn't. And so he served us well for a little over a year, before most recently being recognized for his significant contribution in the real estate community. He was just appointed CEO for Atlanta for Keller Williams, and it's with that significant new role and his commute to Atlanta, Buckhead every day, that he realized that his work-life balance was going to be a bit out of sorts. They're a very engaged family. They homeschool their children. They have got kids who are very active in a variety of sports, so we certainly applaud his decision to get his, I think it's Tuesday nights, back in the very challenging schedule that he had. But in the course of his contribution here, he made a variety of valued contributions to the, to that role, so we certainly thank him as well. He would have been here this evening, but unfortunately, he took ill today. I wish everybody the best and thanks everybody for the opportunity he had to serve. So last and certainly not least, but probably the greatest celebration is the fact that we've got Brenda Hamstead here this evening with her husband Julian. I believe it's your mom that's with us this evening, so we're delighted to have you as with us this evening as well. I met Brenda a number of years ago and always admired her performance in serving on the Board of Zoning Appeals. She was first named to that committee by Matt Coons and served honorably in, as Matt's appointee, and it was an easy opportunity for me to carry on her profound contribution that she had made throughout her tenure serving Matt and has served us in a, in the most professional and, but very sensitive and courteous way. The Board of Zoning Appeals is one of the most difficult boards and committees that we have. It's a really easy job when you get to say yes to somebody who's coming in for a variance and asking for something that is, is maybe their vision or their dream. It's even harder when you have to say no. And yet Brenda found a way to take stock of all the measures that she would expect of a true professional. She made careful measure of the things where variances could be granted, but also was not afraid to toe the line and say the hard no when it was best for Milton. It's her, her family balance was, I think, called into question, too, with the number of hours required to serve in that role and with some new grandchildren and some recent marriages in her family. We were delighted when Brenda decided to get her, I think, Monday nights back or Tuesday nights back, I'm not sure which night it was, but I couldn't think of anybody who has served with more honor and distinction than Brenda has. Delighted to have had a chance to serve together with her in this very important role for the city. It has been my honor to, to, to call out these, these areas of service that Brenda has given to the city for the, for the five years that she served. So thank you very much, Brenda. Thank you very much, Julian, and thanks, Mom, for the service that she's been able to provide to the city. Thank you. And we do have a flag.
All those coming down there. You want all this? Yeah. Up and down. Yeah.
Don't get me.
Back a little bit, and then we just tighten up tiny bit. Three, two, one. Okay, good. Thank you.
Three, two, one.
Three, two, one.
Okay, will the city clerk please say on the next item?
The next item is proclamation recognizing Arbor Day 2023. Mayor Peyton Jameson.
Thank you. I always look forward to recognizing Arbor Day. These years come by pretty quickly. And this year, our Arbor Day event will be held Friday, February 17. That's starting at 3:30 PM. But the location is Milton City Park and Preserve at 1785 Dinsmore Road. We will be celebrating this day with the planting of 13 winged elms along our new walking trail just outside the community center. Nuttle oak seedlings will be handed out for attendees to take home and plant in their own yard. Acorn Tree Care will be present with some of their tree equipment and providing demonstrations on tree care. This is always a great event, lots of activities for kids. So we really hope we see everyone there. And with that, I will read this proclamation, and Arborist Sandra Dewitt will receive it. And this is whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the city of Milton has been recognized as a Tree City USA community each year since 2009, and whereas the city of Milton and our citizens are committed to the stewardship of our natural resources, now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Milton hereby recognize and proclaim for the year 2023, February 17, as Arbor Day, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, to make Milton an even greater place to live, work, and raise a family. And further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to promote the well-being of future generations. And this is given under my hand and seal, the city of Milton, Georgia, on the sixth day of February 2023. And with that, Sandra, if you come up, we'll get this proclamation. Would you like to say any few words or no? That's right. You also come on down, Greg?
More. Thanks. No coughing, so.
Here, let's see. Or Rick, or yeah, we're just, yeah. That works, works, thanks. You guys are pros, so. Three, two, one. You're good. Thank you.
Moving on to first presentations, will the city clerk please say on the item?
That item is consideration of an ordinance of the city of Milton, modifying section 16-4 of the Code of the City of Milton, Georgia, to clarify who may appoint election superintendents. Agenda item number 23-039. Mayor?
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the first presentation item? So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Moore and a second from Councilmember Verhoff to approve the first presentation item as read. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. So we will, there's no public hearing or zoning agenda items. We'll move on to unfinished unfinished business. Will the city clerk please say on the first item?
The first item is consideration of an ordinance amendment to Chapter 48, Article 4, for modifications to traffic calming. Agenda item number 23-018. Public Works Director Ms. Sarah Leeters.
All right, good evening. Got a presentation tonight on first, the ordinance amendment, and then I'll touch on the policy that'll be presented on the agenda later on in the meeting, but I'm going to cover both presentations together. First of all, we'll go through what is traffic calming? What is not part of our traffic calming program? We'll go through those things that aren't, that are excluded from what we consider our traffic calming program, the history of our traffic calming program, the proposed revisions to both the ordinance and the policy and procedures, and then answer any questions. So the primary goal of traffic calming is to reduce the speed of traffic within neighborhoods and raise awareness of traffic problems. And these are primarily in subdivisions, residential areas. And we approach traffic calming with kind of three lenses for how to how to address these issues, and that's with education enforcement and/or engineering. Then we also look at traffic calming in two different ways. One is passive, and those are the types of measures that don't necessarily, they're not in the roadway affecting drivers directly. They're more like a radar sign or a striping, more of a passive measure. And then active measures are those physical devices in the roadway, like speed tables, mini roundabouts, or islands. Next, I'll highlight what is not included in traffic calming. And first of all, the city still is going to offer resources for some passive measures related to education and enforcement, where we have a temporary radar trailer. Sometimes we do message boards or other signs. And then our enforcement is something that we're not changing with this program. Those are still going to be offered to neighborhoods. And then the other two elements that are not part of this program are warning signs and safety concerns. We do anticipate that these would be requested through what we're going to define as the applicant later on in the presentation, but no petition is required to implement these sort of things. They're regulated by other national standards, the manual on uniform traffic control devices and city policies related to signs. So warning signs, those do need to be identified and approved by the city Public Works Department. That's like the share the road sign, stop ahead, no outlet. Those are sometimes those yellow signs you see along the roadways or on approaches to other areas. And then the last thing to touch on that's not part of the program are safety concerns. And we don't consider safety is not a form of traffic calming. It can impact speeds, but it is not used for speed control. So those types of things are stop sign evaluation, sight visibility, not being able to see clearly at intersections or along roadways, stop bars, crosswalks, and no parking. We only look at no parking when there is a safety concern with those. We first adopted an ordinance in 2007. In 2010, updated that ordinance, and there was a resolution approved that created and adopted the policy. So because that policy was adopted by resolution, we are going to need a resolution later on tonight to update that policy document. Did our first implementation under that program in 2012, and we've implemented in eight different neighborhoods through the program. In December, we had a discussion on the program ordinance and policy. Recommended changes that came out of that December meeting were to remove the traffic calming warrants. Those were primarily in place when we needed to look at cost benefit of installing measures with city funds. Another change that was recommended was to remove the HOA provision that allowed HOAs to act on behalf of the neighborhoods and instead defer to the petition of 67% requirement. That was already in the code. We're just removing the HOA provision. So we're not changing that petition requirement, just removing HOA provision. To remove the city cost share, where applicants are required to fund 100% of all the cost. And then to clarify the process for when these come before council or if they come before council. Like I mentioned, the applicant, we define that in the ordinance as a person having the authority to act on behalf of the subdivision or study area. And in the case of a mandatory HOA, that's a member of the board. In a non-mandatory HOA, we are looking for a person that's authorized to act on behalf of the group that they're representing. And lastly, in the introduction, Public Works shall have the authority to approve traffic calming request once the applicant complies with all city codes and policies. Eligibility, like I said, we're going to remove that warrant section. And then, related to the local residential street definition, we removed the lower limit. So we're just looking at any road that has less than 4,000 vehicles a day. About the petition already, we're keeping the language about 67% of homeowners in the study area, removing the option for the mandatory HOA to act in lieu of the petition process. And to remove traffic calming devices requires the same petition as installation. The sections in the ordinance related to cost, we're removing the section on the fee as well as the cost share. Now, all of these will be carried over into the policy and procedures manual. So again, it was adopted by resolution, which requires a resolution to amend. We're going to match the definition of the applicant, like we showed in the ordinance, remove the eligibility warrants, remove all references to fees and cost share. And like I talked about on the petition, remove the HOA by press provision. This basically highlights the procedure that is mostly staying the same as how it is currently, where Public Works manages the application process, that the applicant will share their concerns and requests. If there's applicable safety studies, those will be conducted, as well as speed studies. Sorry. And the Public Works Department will work on concept solutions with the applicant. The petition process has been updated to mirror exactly how we do in right-of-way abandonment with descriptions on what signatures are required and expirations on signatures. As part of the process, applicants shall procure the construction and/or installation. The measures will be privately constructed, and if requested, the city can assist with follow-up studies. In the appendix of this document, we have the appendix A is the passive program list. And so from that, that was in the previous document, we removed any of the city programs that we would continue to do that wouldn't require the petition. So appendix A is only going to show the passive measures that require a petition. And then appendix D is updated with a new application form and petition form. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Do you want me to ask for public comment first? Can we ask for public comment? Do you have any public comment?
We do, Mayor. We have one emailed public comment. Adding, Adam Hollingsworth at 1475 Rolling Links Drive in Milton 3004 says, Mayor and City Council, I write in opposition to agenda item number 23-018. In short, the proposed changes to the Milton's ordinance code related to traffic calming are tantamount to public safety by referendum. Ours is a republic form of government, a structure in which the voters give authority to elected officials to make decisions for the good of the governed. And if the voters are dissatisfied with those decisions, the next election is the best way to make changes to who represents them. In Milton's current ordinance code, mandatory HOAs, like we have in the White Columns Community Association, can petition the city to conduct a speed study, determine the level of excessive speeding, and allow the HOA to install new safety measures, if warranted by the facts. The authority granted to HOAs, in concert with the city's traffic safety professionals, would be eliminated under the change being considered by the city council tonight. If these changes are approved by the city council, a minority of residents can stop new traffic safety measures, even if the facts support it and even if a majority of residents believe they are needed. There are four questions that should be considered by the city council during your deliberations tonight. Number one, will you require a 67% voter approval for all traffic calming and safety measures across Milton? Number two, if not, why are residential streets within mandatory HOAs the only ones in which a supermajority can stop the professional judgment of the city's transportation safety professionals? Number three, why are you eliminating cost share for traffic calming devices between HOAs and the city, thus requiring an HOA to pay 100% of the cost of new safety measures, even though the streets are owned by the city? Number four, have you sought to meet with and hear from the HOAs across the city of Milton? Or is the proposed ordinance change being driven only by a single project and a single HOA and opposed by a single member of the city council? Thank you for your thoughtful consideration of this important public safety matter. Mayor?
Is there any other public comment?
That's.
Okay.
That's it.
I'll close public comment. Rick?
Yeah, Sarah, just you've done a pretty good job explaining and giving us the background. I just want to clarify. You kind of called out the difference between what are safety measures, which is what we do as a city to make sure our public streets are safe, including within subdivision. And then what this is dealing with is if a subdivision says they want to add traffic calming devices, which this was the same ordinance that Fulton County had before we became a city, because I know we participated in that in our sub. So they would then petition and come forward. Before we were a city, what I recall is it was always a supermajority. We had to do 67%. Almost all subdivisions are mandatory HOAs. At least, I don't know of any that aren't mandatory HOA. But the idea is really to look at traffic calming devices, which are an option that staff will look at to ensure that it's appropriate and it's warranted if the subdivision wants to so move forward in petition. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And just the other thing, I know there was a question here, and people had said, well, why would we? Why would, so again, when we're talking about public safety and safety concerns, which police and Public Works take care of, we're going to continue to do all those things. If a subdivision decides they want to add another measure and staff sees it as appropriate and the majority, 67%, the supermajority within the sub, view that, yes, we'd like to have that on our street because it does impact the subdivision if you have speed tables or whatever, then if staff said, yes, we reviewed, it meets all the requirements, then they can go ahead and it can be approved. So the, and I guess the last thing, some people have said, well, why are we doing away with the cost share? I'm in favor of doing away with the cost share because, again, this is an optional thing. This is not a public safety. The subdivision may view it as something they want to do to enhance within their subdivision, but it's not something that the entire city is implementing, like a stop sign or something like this. This would be something that, again, it's optional for that subdivision. But I support not doing the cost sharing because we're asking people that live on open roads and in other subdivisions to use tax dollars to subsidize that subdivision. If it qualifies, we're okay with that, with them doing it. But I don't believe that that should be a burden, that we go to other taxpayers and say, you need to pay for this. And this is not a single item. This is just a general rule that it's not singling out White Columns or another subdivision. It's just saying this is the way we're going to do things going forward. So I just want, my comments to council is I'm supportive of that. I think it makes sense. I think it's fair.
Sarah, can you tell us, just in surrounding cities, what they do from a cost-sharing plan perspective? If they do that or don't do that or have implemented or have taken it away?
This, I got pulled up a slide here that I had prepared at the last meeting as well as we started talking about some of the other jurisdictions. And I broke it down initially into what the eligibility category was, the petition, and then where there was cost share. There were some that didn't talk really about cost share that it seems like it was a city-funded type of program. But as far as the eligibility, that's the category that we are proposing to remove because it helps. that we are proposing to remove, because it, it helps justify the cost benefit of the, of the measures. So by taking out the cost, we're also taking out the eligibility. But you can see on the petitioning, a couple of the jurisdictions we looked at did look at passive and active differently. Some required passive measures before they would even consider active. That was like Brookhaven. They required a petition, and then they wanted to look at passive measures first. Roswell had no petition requirement for passive measures and sixty-five percent for active-type measures. But they also allowed no vertical measures. So the measures had to be medians or islands or things like that. And then there was no city funding for passive. So the passive was a hundred percent funded by the, the neighborhood. Then here's Johns Creek. They required an initial interest petition before they would even start looking at a neighborhood to show that there was interest in it of fifteen percent, and then fifty plus one. Sandy Springs was the only one we found that had the HOA provision. And it was a similar model to, like council member, more excited about the Fulton County, kind of the mirroring of that model. And they have the seventy-five percent, but then they also allow the HOA provision. There were two that had different petition requirements, whether it was eligible or not. Like Cherokee County, seventy percent if it is eligible, and then even a higher percentage required if it didn't meet the eligibility criteria. And Decatur, I just did find this one this week. And there's no petition required if it's eligible and seventy-five percent if it's not.
Okay. Thank you. That helps kind of put everything into perspective.
Sure.
A question for Ken to alleviate some concerns. To give a extreme example is if there is a true safety issue, and let's say it's a small neighborhood and very difficult to get to sixty-seven percent, council can always go in and do what we need to do to protect the citizens, correct?
I, I mean, city, city streets are city property. City right-of-way is city property, and the City Council has plenary authority over those streets to make them safe.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? I will open it for a motion. Going once.
Yeah, I'll, I'll step up. Mr. Mayor, I make, make a motion that we pass the ordinance to amend appendix A related to chapter thirty-four, article two. I'm sorry, I just looked at the wrong one. Okay. Consideration for ordinance amendment to chapter forty-eight for modifications to traffic calming.
Okay. You have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Moore and a second from Councilmember Jacobus to approve agenda item number two-three dash zero one eight. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Will the City Clerk please say on the next item?
Item B is consideration of an ordinance to amend appendix A related to chapter thirty-four, article two, section thirty-four dash twenty-four of the Milton City Code to allow for collection of registration fees for the newly-created Milton Summer Day Camp. Agenda item number twenty-three dash zero one nine. Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Tom McElveen.
Mayor and Council, good evening. What I have for your consideration this evening is an amendment to the Code of Ordinances, appendix A, to set fees for the city's new Milton Summer Day Camp that will be held at the Milton City Park and Preserve. The purpose of the Parks and Rec Department and its programs we offer, such as this camp, are to create fun and positive experiments, experiences for our residents and community. Today, I'll provide an overview of the vision for this camp and ultimately, a proposed weekly charge for the participants. The funding for this program was approved as part of the FY two thousand and twenty-three budget. Additionally, it's supported within the strategic plan under priority three, goal one, objective four, to identify and offer opportunities for new recreation programs to meet the citizens' needs and expectations. A program such as this one was identified as a community need when the original MOU with Alfreda expired back in January of two thousand and nineteen. And as the program manager back then, I got a lot of calls about various programming, but summer camp was one of the hot topics. With the renovations now completed, the, the community center at the Milton City Park and Preserve, we now have a viable location to host such a camp. The campus itself will run for seven weeks in June and July, with camp taking a break over the week of the fourth. This allows for our staff to enjoy a week-long break in the middle of camp to give them, give them a little rest. Generally speaking, it will be a typical day camp with five days full of activities. A small sampling of these activities are listed here on this slide deck. The real, the real big activity to see and a good perk is there will be several visits to the pool each week for these kids. So it's, it's going to definitely be utilized a lot by these, the residents here. Staff is proposing the camp be a hundred and fifty dollars per week for Milton residents. That resident rate would put a non-resident at two hundred and twenty-five dollars per week. Staff desire to have a competitive weekly rate to help drive registration and most importantly, make it affordable for the city of Milton residents that we serve. It's relevant for me to note that the fee ordinance in appendix A, chapter thirty-four, also states that any program offered by the city of Milton, such as this one, that is an in-house-run program, qualifies an employee for a fifty percent discount off that Milton registration fee. With this program in particular, I could see these employee perks being utilized a little bit more than some of our other recreational opportunities, like pool passes or cantilever souls, facility rentals. So I do have a strategy to get in front of that, as I feel our residents of Milton should also get a first crack at this program. So we're looking at having an open period of time where our Milton residents can register first, and then we'll open it up to non-residents and employees after that. Any Milton resident who happens to be an employee would also be able to get in in that early period. But that'll, that'll keep it from just being an employee-driven program. We can definitely give our, our residents an opportunity to get in first. Lastly, with the provide, the projected revenues of this camp, along with the staffing and fees associated with it, we expect the camp to run very close to cost neutral, and it really will depend more on that aforementioned, you know, employee use of the, the discount. That really concludes the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Tom? So, all right. I will open it for a motion. Or any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Motion?
Mayor, I make a motion we approve agenda item number twenty-three dash oh one nine.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Jacobus and a second from Councilmember Cookerly to approve agenda item number two-three dash zero one nine. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That's unanimous. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to new business. Will the City Clerk please say on the first item?
Mayor, that item is consideration of a resolution of the city of Milton creating an interim full-time firefighter position for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three fiscal year. Agenda item number twenty-three dash zero four one. Human Resources Director, Ms. Nikki Graham.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you on behalf of this resolution. On behalf of the fire chief in the department, the Human Resources Department, we are requesting that we create an interim firefighter slash EMT position while an employee is on leave, and we are remaining in compliance with that employee's rights. This position will allow the fire department to remain at capacity and able to serve the citizens with significant coverage. This position is also going to be funded using salary savings within this current fiscal year from October of twenty-two to September the thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-three, therefore having no financial impact on the budget.
Thank you. Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Any questions?
No impact to the budget. That's always our favorite part.
Makes, makes it a little easier.
Cost neutral.
Thank you, Nikki.
Any, I'd like to open it for a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve agenda item number twenty-three dash oh four one.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Cookerly and a second from Councilmember Moore to approve agenda item number two-three dash zero four one. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That's unanimous. Thank you. Will the City Clerk please say on the next item?
Item C is consideration of a resolution to amend and revise the city of Milton traffic calming policy. Agenda item number twenty-three dash zero four two. Public Works Director, Ms. Sarah Leaders.
Thank you. So I already presented on the content of what this is going to update, and it just mirrors the ordinance that was on the agenda ahead of this.
Thank you. Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right. Any questions? All right. Motion, anybody?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve agenda item number twenty-three dash oh four two.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Jacobus and a second from Councilmember Moore to approve agenda item number two-three dash zero four two. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. And that will conclude it. The only report I have is State of the City, February fifteenth. Anyone wants to show up and watch me speak for thirty minutes? We are starting at six o'clock, refreshments and speech at seven, and we're all looking forward to it.
Are you going to practice the big words?
I'm going to try.
Just don't, just don't put our burrito in it.
That, that killed Joe.
Anything else?
Yes, I do. Yeah. As we begin to look for ways to increase development along the Route Nine corridor, the Welcome to Milton is located in front of the Target, which is about four blocks, five blocks, from really where you enter the business area of Milton. And the reason I bring that up is I'd like to see us put on an agenda someplace where council can talk about moving that to where Route Nine intersects with Windward Parkway. And I think the sense of urgency to get it on the agenda is because they're now doing the construction on that intersection. So if we're going to do something, I would think now would be the time to do it. So I just bring it up for everybody to think about in hopes that we have some sort of consideration or some way of getting it on agenda, so we can talk about it and move forward with it.
Yeah. Fair point. Good.
Yeah. I'd support that, too, if we could, whether it's a work session or whatever. But Jan and I have talked. It's, it's been strange that it was all like three-quarters a mile in from the city, and then it's Welcome to the City of Milton. But the, the concern I think we have living over there is if we don't do it now, and it gets all built out, and we don't work with GDOT, we're, we're not going to have space where we can actually put a sign or appropriate entry into really what is our largest business district in the city.
Sounds good. Easy. Anybody else?
Just one last thing. I, I did attend Cities United. It was actually, the classes were good. I think GMA has actually improved and stepped up their game as far as the content. They're more participatory. One of the things that we talked about, one of the classes I went to had to do with regional coordination and cooperation, which I was able to say, we do a good job in public safety, and these are things we continue to look. And how will cities work better? Got to, to network with a number of mayors and city councils from different people. And I also got to accept the plaque for our city of, of ethics. So I'll be bringing that plaque next time, and then we can, I'll show it to you, and then we'll hand it off. Because often we just said, oh, we pass that, but we don't really hear. But we did. They did have a ceremony where they actually recognized the cities.
Good. Thanks for attending, Rick. Anybody else? Okay. With that, I'll have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Have a motion from Councilmember Moore and a second from Councilmember Moore to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Good meeting.
Good night.